Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting of March 20th, 2019. And before we start the meeting, could I please have Mark Qualley come forward from our Father's House for the opening prayer?
I'm Pastor Mark from our Father's House, and I'm going to go ahead and do the opening prayer. I'm glad to be here, honored to be here tonight with each and every one of you. So let us pray. Father, we just come before you right now in the name of Jesus, and we ask that you settle over this council meeting this night. We pray that your Spirit will rest upon each council member, upon our mayor, Father, and we just pray, Lord, that every issue that is brought to the table tonight, Lord, you would, your hand would guide and lead. And we just thank you, Lord, that you are over this city, and we thank you that your Spirit leads and guides each and every member of this board tonight, Father. And we just pray that you would continue to lead each leader of this city, pray that you keep your hand upon our police officers, upon our firefighters, and upon every leader in every facet of this city, Father. And we just thank you, and we give you the praise, and we trust, Lord, in your ability, Lord, to lead and to guide each and every one of us, Father. And we pray for your salvation over this city, that your Spirit would rest upon each and every citizen of Los Banos, Father. We pray this all in the name of Jesus, and everybody says, "Amen." Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the March 20th, 2019 meeting of the Los Banos City Council. And would you please stand for the flag salute? And Brenda, would you lead us, please? Brenda Geary?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, roll call. Director Maloney?
Here.
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. And I'll remind you, if you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
My name is Nick Lorette Demola, and I am actually a resident of Merced City. But good evening, Mayor Villalta and the council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I am the deputy director for WorkNet Merced County, here on behalf of my director, David Marioni. I'm here to give you some information on the services we provide, as well as the opportunity for increased services here in Los Banos, and to address some items that have arisen in recent days around workforce services. The Merced County Workforce Development Board, which directs the work of WorkNet Merced, and is comprised of a majority of businesspeople from throughout the county, unanimously voted last week to seek out potential new ways of doing businesses, doing business, that would expand services to this area beyond what are currently offered through a nationwide procurement. Currently, we are negotiating with the Merced County Office of Education to increase services to out-of-school youth in the community, as well as negotiating with Merced College to execute construction training in Los Banos, designed to put both out-of-school youth and out-of-work adults into the building trade so they can earn sustainable employment through the acquisition of skills that last a lifetime. With all that said, we are proud of the work of our staff here in Los Banos. We look forward to serving this population for years and years to come, with diligent, caring staff and a service-delivery strategy that can elevate our work even higher. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Adam Kiseloff, resident of Los Banos, 325 K Street. I involve myself in the community. I got a really bad slack for it. I believe I'm a targeted individual. Last time I addressed the business meeting board on the opposite of this meeting in a speech that says, "I want to believe again." Since that time, I had joined college, and we got into college, and I had many of the teachers there, even some of the board members of the other board, they would comment and say, "Oh, are you the guy who spoke?" And since then, I went, I attended college to better my life. They expelled me for refusing a plan that was hatched by a young man that was best friends to a security guard, and he wanted me to sell ecstasy to your children because I was so well-known. He says, "Everybody knows you. I want you to sell ecstasy and to get him on heroin and to get him on prostitution." And I told the security guard, and he told me that he hated me because I made him do too much paperwork. And for my final project, I wanted to find the cure to homelessness, which is pretty well-known for trying. And so they had mushrooms that were growing on the lawn that were established already for five years, and I've only been back for two and a half. I couldn't, they accused me of planting them there. They're edible mushrooms with a chocolate bore, chocolate brown spore print, meaning that they're edible, not poisonous, and as a food source. Many sources in the social outreach, Habitat for Humanity, when it used to exist, Salvation Army, all those things I involved myself in and got really bad results from. They're stealing food at Salvation Army and stealing the money from Habitat for Humanity. It's just nothing was helping. Like, I was trying to put bikes on their homeless people's feet, and they wanted to give the bikes away to scrappers who didn't want to pay any money for them. My name is Adam, and I had a horrible experience here in Los Banos, and you guys are the architects. I feel that down, and I feel like you guys have, especially, Mayor, you have, you used to be an educator, so you would have very, you wouldn't, you would defend them. I was racially discriminated there. I never reported it, only to the security guard who never, anything, they told me, "What do you have to do with being a Spanish?" My grandmother and great-grandmother, they were born and raised in Mexico, and they had a scholarship trip, and they says, "Well, what the fuck does Kiseloff have to do?" I'm sorry, what is, that was their language. What does that have to do with being a Spanish? And I says, and they was refused, and every time, even at the book sale, I was, I had, I tried to step up to be a man, to do the work, and it was, I was getting so much slack. It was just ridiculous. And so my fine business must be up, but you guys are the architects. You have, I don't have the authority to fix anything. My name's Adam.
Thank you. Adam, the only comment I will make is we do not have any jurisdiction over the Community College District.
Merced College is run by you. You give them money. The police here, they need more. There's no deputies, there's no sheriff, deputies, you need it. There's too much crime. You guys should be fired if you don't lower the crime.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level, and we will go on to item six, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on a consent agenda are considered to be routine and are voted on in one motion unless removed from the, for consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrants numbers, 215140 through 215345, in the amount of $490,191.13. Minutes for the January 16th, 2019 city council meeting. Minutes for the March 6th, 2019 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6058, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for auditing services with Price Page and Company. City Council Resolution Number 6059, accepting the G Street waterline project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number 6060, approving the consultant agreement notice of augmentation of the professional services agreement with David Tossigan Associates, Inc., to provide a nexus study for the update of the City of Los Banos Development Impact Fee Program and adopt a revised budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019 as it pertains to the City Hall Admin Traffic Impact Fee Account and the Traffic Impact Fee Account. City Council Resolution Number 6061, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Placeworks for On-Call Transportation Planning Services, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion at this time? If not, do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Santos, second by Jones, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Public hearing, to receive public comment, consideration of the general plan amendment number 2018-03, zone change 2018-03, mitigated negative declaration SCH 2019011005. The proposed project consists of a general plan amendment and zone change to redesignate approximately five acres of low-density residential to high-density residential for the development of 96 multifamily residential units located on the west side of Mercy Springs Road, SR 165, north of Santa Barbara Street, and east of Santa Venetia Street, APN 082030051. And this is continued from the February 20th, 2019 meeting, and we'll go to our community and economic developer, Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So there's a PowerPoint presentation with this item, please. Okay. Great. So just to recap, the project before you is a general plan amendment and a zone change to redesignate approximately five acres from low-density residential to high-density residential, and this is to facilitate the development of multifamily units in the City of Los Banos. This is really just as, well, this is a refresher from what I spoke on back in, on February 20th, but just as a reminder, this is just the first step in the entitlement process. If this project is approved tonight, this entitlement does not approve construction. This project will still be required to go through the process of design review and site plan review with the planning commission. So the housing element, which actually we are going to have a public hearing later on tonight on an annual progress report on the housing element, but according to our housing element, we are required to rezone and redesignate and adopt through a general plan amendment vacant land to meet the unaccommodated need from the fourth cycle, and that was the planning period between 2009 and 2014. This project site was identified within the fourth cycle as vacant land to be redesignated. So it is a goal, as well as a program, that's a shortfall carryover from the previous planning period of the housing element that carried forward to the housing element cycle that we're in right now, to comply with. And failure to rezone and to address the unaccommodated need will result in housing element non-compliance. And as I previously had presented, state funds are attached to housing element compliance, which consists of CDBG grant funding, Caltrans grants, SB2, and any other state funding that's out there. The state is proposing that all state revenue, including gas tax, would also be attached to the city's housing element. So just some background, on February 20th, the city council had discussion regarding design standards and security for multifamily units. So staff went back and looked at the city's guidelines specifically to multifamily, and our existing multifamily design guidelines require specific standards that relate to orientation, pedestrian routes, landscaping, landscape security, site lighting, architecture, and trash receptacles specifically. And those guidelines are attached to the staff report. And in addition to that, staff not only mentioned on February 20th, but also wants to reconfirm that we do have various tools that address security within our existing ordinances and policies. So currently, right now, we have a design license ordinance. So for any multifamily unit that, or facility that has more than four units, they're required to have a business license. And with that business license, we can require specific security measures based on justification, and we can require reasonable conditions for the project to accommodate.
So, so what we talked about, and the applicant agreed to the 24-hour security, will be in the design standards as when the project?
Yes.
Okay.
It will be a part of the site plan review process. So then we also have the design review process, and security is an element of that that will be addressed. Staff is currently evaluating options for a standalone ordinance that would come back before the city council for multifamily developments, which would address security and crime issues, specifically those types of developments. The current project, the applicant has indicated, as indicated back on February 20th, that his intention is to provide adequate security measures, which include cameras and onsite security. And so we will require that through the site plan review process as a condition of approval. We will do that. So this is the location of the project. It's located on the west side of Mercy Springs Road, north of Santa Barbara Street, and east of Santa Venetia Street. It's immediately north of the Church of the Nazarene, their recreational fields, and it's also immediately south of a previously approved tentative map, which is for 14 single-family residential homes, which is still on, is a still active tentative map, which is anticipated to file a final map here within the next 12 months. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. So the areas highlighted in yellow are single-family residential. The highlighted area, the areas in red are highway commercial, and the dark brown is high-density residential, and the tan is medium-density residential. So within the surrounding area, there are different densities of housing within the area. Multifamily is better suited, located next to transportation areas, transportation corridors, and next to Mercy Springs, would near, be near services, including the Dollar General Market, so it would have the ability to have a neighborhood market, as well as the Circle K with any type of conveniences they have, and then the future development that will be along Mercy Springs, which includes highway commercial-type uses. In the environmental analysis, an initial study was prepared to identify and assess potential environmental impacts of the project. Staff determined that the project would not result in a significant environmental effect and provided mitigation measures described within the initial study and the mitigated nug that are implemented. Staff then prepared a notice of intent, which was posted with the Merced County Clerk, and delivered to the Office of Planning and Research for circulation. The circulation period was between January 4th, 2019, to February 4th, 2019, at 5:00 PM. The City of Los Banos, on February 4th, did receive one comment letter from the Los Banos Unified School District, which is included in your packet, and I went over very thoroughly the last meeting. If you have any questions on that comment letter, I'd be happy to go back and answer, but I'm just going to keep moving along if no one has any questions on the city's response. Okay. Essentially, the comments were that SB 50, the school's opinion was that SB 50 provided funding but did not fully mitigate school facilities, and the City of Los Banos' response is that that SB 50 is full mitigation and specifically limits cities and counties from imposing exaction in excess of that provided by the statute. So there's various tier level of fees that's adopted by the state of California, and according to SB 50, that is full mitigation for school facilities. On the analysis of the general plan amendment and the zone change, looking at the compatibility with adjacent uses, the proposed project is adjacent to the Church of the Nazarene, as I previously said, and single-family residential uses, as well as multifamily facilities that are located within the vicinity of the project site, which are the Court of Fountains, which is a townhome project of about 32 units, as well as the Casa Mobile Home Park. And it will assist, this particular project will assist the city with our housing element compliance efforts to meet the unaccommodated needs identified in Program 1D. So the next steps after the entitlement process is design review. So the next steps after the entitlement process is design review, and that will be conducted with a study session. This will be as a part of the site plan review process. This process is done when we initially receive a formal application from the applicant to go through the design, the architecture, and these various elements, which I'm going to point out to you. It's architectural, style inconsistency, height, bulk, area, color of buildings, types of construction materials, physical and architectural relationships with existing and proposed structures, height, materials, variations in boundary walls, fences, exterior elevations of all sides, methods used to screen mechanical equipment, landscape and site treatment, and aesthetics of exterior lighting elements. In addition to that, as a part of the design review process, it is analyzed and determined whether the project meets the guidelines, our design guidelines. And we go through the various district that it's associated with, that project is associated with. In this instance, this project would be required to follow our multifamily design guidelines, which, as I previously stated, they're attached to the staff report. And that was previously in my presentation, but it does address issues that relate to orientation, landscaping, landscape security. But we're also going to address security of this project as a part of that design review process.
Yes. Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Stacy, I looked over the Chapter Five that you included in the packet for residential design standards. And, you know, there may be some in here that might apply to the project. But there were some pictures of residents in Los Manos that, you know, in my opinion, are less than acceptable. I'm just wondering, are we using these as, you know, I wouldn't see them as being acceptable to use as a standard for our design review. And, you know, maybe we need to start looking at upgrading that.
Refreshing, and I absolutely agree that we're due for a refresher of the design guidelines.
Yeah, it's, it's really kind of archaic. So I just want to bring that up, that the elements that we have in here, some of the descriptions may be okay, but we need to have better samples as we move forward in our community to raise the standard of living in the communities that we're building.
Absolutely. And so over the past ten years, specifically, higher-density development has evolved tremendously. There are so many beautiful design concepts, you wouldn't even know that that dense of units is located in that location. They're just done so well. So we do use the text primarily in meeting those specific elements of the design guidelines. We typically don't refer to those pictures. If anything, we look at other communities and areas that we like, and we draw from inspiration from those particular facilities that we've seen. And, but I do agree, we need maybe some breath of fresh air and just to update our.
A lot of people are not conceptual, they're just visual.
Yes.
And we don't have to go very far, as we did, what, about ten years ago up to Sacramento? We can go right to Morgan Hill. There's some good elements there, and in South San Jose, there's some excellent elements. So if need be, and the City Council needs to take another trip to look at stuff like that, so we take shots and include that into our elements for potential builders to see, then I think it's time to upgrade that. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I think it covered all those areas. So the next step would be a site plan review process, which would require a public hearing. The three-hundred-foot radius, so surrounding properties within the three-hundred-foot radius would be notified and would be involved in that process. Would require determined, that the Planning Commission determined findings for approval of the project, with the city has specific findings, design review compliance, design guideline compliance is one of those findings. And conditions may be imposed that are deemed necessary to implement the purpose of the design and site development review procedures, and to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. And so we'll be using that site plan review process to address the security and crime issue. Conformity of building permit plans to the site plan review approval is a requirement. So prior to issuance of a building permit, the Community and Economic Development Department reviews the building permit plans for conformance with Planning Commission approval. So public comment, a public hearing notice was published in the Los Manos Enterprise, ML to the three-hundred-foot radius, which took place on February eighth, two thousand and nineteen. And as previously stated, one comment letter was received from the Los Manos Unified School District, which has been addressed. And comments are contained within the staff report. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 6052, approving mitigated negative declaration, State Clearinghouse Number 2019011005, and mitigation monitoring reporting plan. Second, adopt a resolution Number 6053, approving general plan amendment Number 2018-03. And then last, waive the second reading and adopt ordinance Number 1169 by title to rezone property from R1, which is low-density residential, to R3, high-density residential. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before we go to the public hearing, does any council member have any questions at this time? Oh, it says open the public hearing.
It was opened and closed back on February twentieth, so it's, I think legally, we're not required to open the public hearing again.
I have something that says open the public hearing.
It's the agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay, if there are anyone who wishes to speak on City Council Resolution Number 6052, 6053, and ordinance Number 1169, please come forward. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing on those three items and bring it back to council level. So we have one, two, three, four actions to take care of. So the first one is going to be the adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6052. So who would like to make a motion, if any? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6052 as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, it's been motion by Lewis, second, I'm going to go slow because I want to get this right. Motion by Lewis, second by Johnson Santos, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6052 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mr. Jones?
Motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6053, approving the general plan amendment Number 2018-03 as submitted by title.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Santos, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6053 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Now we have two actions, a waiving of the second reading and the adoption of Ordinance 1169. And I'm going to go to Mrs. Lewis, and I'm going to turn on the mic because I want the same person to do that. So hang on, Mrs. Lewis. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of Ordinance Number 1169 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos, for the waiving of the second reading of Ordinance Number 1169. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 1169 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, it's been motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to, for the approval of an adoption of Ordinance Number 1169, and this is a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Maria, Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes. Okay, let's go on to Item B, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of ordinance to establish the regulations of processing an accessory dwelling unit. Ordinance Number 1170, amending and restating Article Thirty, Chapter Three, Title Nine of the Los Manos Municipal Code related to accessory dwelling units. And this is the first reading and introduction. Item C, public hearing to receive, oh, that's be a separate one, right? Okay, let's go, let's do, let's do that one first. Okay, ordinance Number 1170, and we're going to go to Director Elms, okay?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So there's a PowerPoint presentation with this one as well.
All right. There you go.
All right. So the proposed ordinance before you is actually an amendment to an existing ordinance within the city of Los Manos. And this is to Article Thirty, Chapter Three, of Title Nine of the Los Manos Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units. Just some background on this particular project. Accessory dwelling units are also known as secondary, second units, secondary living units, mother-in-law units, and granny flats, and they're small, self-contained living units that have their own kitchen, bedrooms, and bathroom space. They can be located within a single-family residential unit. They can be attached or detached to the primary dwelling unit. And only one accessory dwelling unit is allowed per parcel. And this is required because it provides additional housing within the existing residential neighborhoods. And typically, the rents are less than a comparable-sized apartment or condominium, and the lower rents make these units more affordable to low- and moderate-income individuals or households. And this is an example of an accessory dwelling unit. This photo came directly from the state of California Department of Housing and Community The current law was, went into effect on January first, two thousand and seventeen. And it allows limited development standards that include, but are not limited to parking, height, setback, lock coverage, landscape, architectural review, maximum size of a unit, and standards that prevent adverse impacts on historical places. So that's essentially what the law says. The law does not apply to homeowners associations. The bill that was made into effect January first, two thousand and seventeen, does not affect the private use restrictions in CCNRs, which are covenants, conditions, and restrictions of California homeowners associations. The city has no authority to overrule a homeowners association since it is a contractual agreement between the homeowner and the homeowner association. However, there is currently legislation that cities and homeowner associations are watching, which is AB 494, which may amend the law to target homeowners associations in requiring them to allow accessory dwelling units. So we'll be watching that. The proposed ordinance has various requirements, which are what the state has stated local government can regulate. So I'm just going to go through what this particular ordinance consists of, which is now in compliance with state regulations. It only allows one accessory dwelling unit or junior accessory dwelling unit, and it can be located on any residentially-zoned property, but it can, it has to have one single-family residence. It can't have a duplex, it can't have a triplex or multifamily. It can, if it has a single-family residence, it would qualify for an accessory dwelling unit. The owner shall occupy, as a principal residence, either the primary unit or the accessory dwelling unit. And this is actually a carryover from our existing ordinance that we have now. We do require that the primary residence live in one of the two units. The accessory dwelling unit shall not be sold separately, and it shall not be rented or leased for less than thirty day, thirty consecutive days. Within our new proposed ordinance, we're also requiring a deed restriction, which needs to be completed and recorded. And this is to ensure that the owner of the unit, of the property, lives in one of the two units, either the principal residence or the accessory dwelling unit.
So there's no secondary residence?
No, and this is to preserve the neighborhood, is essentially why we're requiring a deed restriction. It will be enforced by the Community and Economic Development Department, and I apologize that this text is, at least from my, I seeing across the room, it's a bit small. So it will be enforced by the Community and Economic Development Department. We're going to require that the deed restriction be recorded prior to the issuance of a building permit. And it'll also be enforced by the Building Department, which will not issue a building permit unless a deed restricted is, is recorded. And then if such noncompliance is found, the Community and Economic Development Department, as well as the Building Department, will work with the Code Enforcement Department to enforce.
Stacy, other question?
Sure.
Yeah, just hang on. Let me get these things off here. Okay, could you press your button for me, please, Mrs. Lewis? Thank you. Hang on just one second. There you go.
Okay, thank you. I want to go back a little bit. We have the accessory development unit, dwelling unit, I'm sorry. And then we have a junior accessory dwelling unit, which states it's similar to repurpose space for various streamlined measures. But exactly what, what is the difference?
So I have a slide dedicated just to junior accessory dwelling units, which I'm going to get to. What they are.
Okay, thank you.
That's coming up. Good question. So the deed restriction, the intent, as I stated, it's to preserve the residential zoning district, and it's to be recorded prior to obtaining a building permit. It will include pertinent restrictions and limitations, essentially the conditions that are required within the ordinance that the property owner follow. It will run with the land, and it's binding upon any future owners. The purpose of the deed restriction is to notify future owners of our ordinance requirements to its assurance, its insurance, that that future owner would know the city's requirements and would be fully aware what's required in order to contain a lawful accessory dwelling unit. If they cannot meet the requirements of the city's ordinance, then they would need to convert that accessory dwelling unit to a non-residential unit, which they can do, and then they can remove the deed restriction once that accessory dwelling unit has been converted to a non-residential use. The minimum parcel size shall not be required, but all residential zoning district requirements regarding setbacks, coverage, and floor area ratio shall be met. So that means that accessory dwelling unit still has to follow all of our setbacks, still has to follow all the rules that we require within the zoning district. And if it can meet those requirements, then it would be lawful to build. The minimum living area of attached accessory dwelling units shall be a hundred and fifty square feet, if it's attached. And if it's detached, it would be a minimum of four hundred square feet.
And is there a minimum square footage per person?
There is not. The state of California does not have a minimum, and does not allow us, so we're within the confines of what the state of California says we can do.
So you can have a hundred and fifty-foot, square foot attached area and have five people living in it?
Well, if it's attached, it would be to the primary dwelling unit. So it would be however many people are living in the primary dwelling unit, as well as that hundred and fifty square feet. A hundred and fifty square feet would essentially be one bedroom, a bathroom, and a kitchen. That's all that it would be able to hold, is one bedroom.
Yeah, okay. I guess what I'm, yeah. I guess what I'm saying, what's going to stop people from stacking and packing houses?
So in terms of, of?
Of people living in a dwelling.
Of residents?
Yeah, and... So, I don't know, I mean, that bothers me, I mean, because there, there are a lot of people out there that are not your greatest character. And, and I worry about someone living in substandard areas.
It's just that portion of the law, the state has not given us any flexibility. We can, um, be less restrictive, I believe, in that area than the State of California, but we can't say, um, that it cannot, it has to be more than a hundred and fifty square feet, so we can't say that the minimum for an attached has to be five hundred square feet, we have to be within the confines of what the state has told us we have to be. So we're just, currently, right now, our existing accessory dwelling unit ordinance requires a minimum of four hundred, whether it's attached or detached, so the minimum is four hundred, however, we're not in compliance. So if someone were to come tomorrow to the Building Department and ask for a building permit for an accessory dwelling unit, and they met the setback requirements, and they had an attached accessory dwelling unit that was a hundred and fifty square feet, I would have to allow that building permit to be issued, because that is what the State of California has set the requirement to be.
Yes, but I'm looking at Health and Safety Code, too, and, and how we can guarantee that, that people are gonna have accommodations that are going to be livable. Yes, Mrs. Lewis? It's on now, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, you haven't gotten to this part, Stacy, but it states that basically if you have, um, I guess a studio apartment or, uh, less, I can't find the square footage of that, um, you, you don't have to provide parking, but if you have... Oh, where is it? One parking space is required for a studio and one-bedroom units. Two parking spaces are required for two bedrooms-
Mm-hmm.
-or larger units.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, am I assuming that this is off, off-street parking that you're requiring these units to have?
Yes.
But you're not requ, there's no requirement that the state says that, you know, in a, in a one-bedroom or a studio, you can only have one person or two people?
No, uh, so what the state says is that there's no additional parking required if it's within the existing single-family residential unit. If it's detached and it's an additional accessory dwelling unit, then it shall require, it can only be required to have one, and tandem parking is allowed, but it does have to provide one parking space, and I do have a slide dedicated just to parking, and I'll get into detail, um, on what, what is required.
Okay, I'll, I'll reserve the rest of my questions on that when we get to that slide.
Okay. So, attached accessory dwelling units shall not exceed fifty percent of the existing dwelling unit or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is less, so that would be the maximum. It cannot exceed, um, more than twelve hundred square feet, or if, uh, the unit is, um, you know, two thousand square feet, it, it would be fifty percent of that, um, but it would have to be less, so it could be no more than twelve hundred, um, square feet. An accessory dwelling unit shall comply with applicable building health and fire codes, and accessory dwelling units shall comply with applicable zoning regulations, and that goes back to setbacks, height requirements, um, composition and materials. An accessory dwelling unit shall be served by the same driveway access to the street as the primary unit. Uh, in addition, if, if attached to the primary dwelling unit, both the accessory dwelling unit and the primary dwelling unit must be served by either a common entrance or a separate entrance to the accessory dwelling unit that's located, uh, and this needs to be for the accessory dwelling unit, it can be located on the side or the rear of the property. Uh, no exterior staircase to a second floor, uh, or primary dwelling unit from the front of a primary dwelling unit. So what that means is that if you have an accessory dwelling unit, um, say on top of a garage, it would not be allowed on the front, um, of that unit. An accessory dwelling unit may not have more than two bedrooms, um, and that is a requirement. So not, obviously it can have one, um, but no more than two. An accessory dwelling unit shall be similar or compatible in character to the primary dwelling unit, so it has to be of the same composition and compatible with the primary dwelling unit. Needs to be located on permanent foundation, uh, so prefab, pref- uh, fabricated homes can be utilized, mobile homes also can be utilized, however, they have to be of the same composition and material as the primary dwelling unit, and they would need to be located on a permanent foundation. So if a mobile home is utilized, it has to have a pitched roof, it has to have the same composition, whether it's stucco or siding, that the primary dwelling unit has to, that has, and, um, the axles will have to be taken off, and the unit would have to be placed into permanent foundation with utilities.
So you can't roll in an airstream, then?
No.
Okay.
That would not qualify.
All right.
Uh, manufactured homes may be used, as I said, as an accessory dwelling unit, as long as it meets our standards, and these are, um, we have those standards now for mobile home units. An accessory dwelling unit is not required to be equipped with fire sprinklers unless the fire sprinkler installation is required for the primary dwelling unit. So if the unit was built after two thousand and sixteen, it is required to have a fire sprinkler suppression system, that's new single-family residential dwelling units. So if that primary dwelling unit was required to have a fire sprinkler system, then the accessory dwelling unit is required to have a fire sprinkler system. If that primary dwelling unit was built prior to a fire sprinkler requirement, so if it was built before two thousand and sixteen and wasn't required to have a fire sprinkler system, then the accessory dwelling unit is not required to have a fire sprinkler system.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, go ahead, uh, the attorney would like to clarify something.
Uh, an accessory dwelling unit can be a manufactured home, I think Stacy misspoke, it cannot be a mobile home or a recreation vehicle or anything like that, but it can be a prefab, pre-manufactured home.
But similar to what the house looks like with the scene?
On a foundation.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right. Yes, uh, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead and press your button. Yes.
So, uh, what are those, uh, those sheds that you can-
Tough sheds?
Tough sheds, yeah. Is, is that, um, eligible, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Well, no, because it's not something you can live in, and I don't know of a tough shed having a bathroom or a kitchen, for, for instance, and it would have to meet all of the applicable building codes to a residential unit, so an accessory building like that could be converted into a dwelling, but...
That, that's, that's what I'm thinking, if it's, if it's large enough and the amenities could be put in there on the permanent foundation, and it, I guess, if it looks like the house and meets the requirements, uh, or if they can make it look like the house, then I assume that could probably be used.
Well, for habitable uses, according to the building code, it would have to meet fire rating, so the walls would have to be a certain, um, thickness of a certain composition, and so a tough shed wouldn't meet those requirements, they would have to have some significant improvements to the tough shed to make it com, comply with the building code.
Okay, and then, um...
So if you had an accessory structure like a poolhouse or a cabana that was actually built, not manufactured, you could convert something like, that would be an accessory unit, you could convert that to an accessory dwelling unit, assuming you met all of the building codes for residential use.
Okay. Um, and this question is for the fire chief. If for some reason a, a dwelling that was built, uh, prior to two thousand and sixteen, which, uh, doesn't require fire suppression, um, let's say it caught on fire, uh, the residents had to build, rebuild it after two thousand and sixteen, are those dwellings required to have fire suppression, and would that carry over into the secondary dwellings?
Good question. I believe if they'd have to do s- major improvements to the home and re, and would require additional permits, they would have to come up to the code, current code.
Okay.
And the accessory dwelling unit has to match the primary dwelling unit in terms of fire suppression.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions this time? Go ahead, Stacy.
Okay.
Sorry, we keep interrupting you, but-
No, that's good, that's fine. Um, in addition to the required off-street parking spaces, so this is a slide dedicated to parking. For the primary dwelling unit, one off-street parking space is required for the accessory dwelling unit. It may be covered or uncovered. It may, uh, be provided as tandem parking on a driveway that otherwise complies with the setbacks and paving requirements of our Los Angeles Municipal Code, um, and that, um, new ordinance was adopted at the end of, uh, December, was, uh, became effective in January, uh, January fourth of this year. Um, and the accessory dwelling unit may utilize alley access if available. If it does have two bedrooms, um, it could be required to have two off-street spaces. Um, if, um, an accessory dwelling unit is a part of, actually, I misspoke, the, the law does say, and I, I apologize, one off-street parking space is required for the accessory dwelling unit. If the accessory dwelling unit is a part of the existing single-family residential or accessory structure, no additional parking is required. No parking is required for a junior accessory dwelling unit, which I'm going to go through what an, a junior accessory dwelling unit is in about a couple-
And do we have an option whether we can adopt those or not?
A junior accessory dwelling unit? Yes, that's completely optional. However, when staff looked at it, um, essentially, we are required to allow accessory dwelling units, and a junior accessory dwelling unit is within the single-family residential home, um, which I'll go through what, as I stated, what that is. Um, and so we saw that there was really no reason not to, um, because accessory dwelling units are permitted already, it just allows for it to be contained within a single-family residence, and it allows it to be a certain size.
Well, if we, if we allow that, can we then require parking with it?
No.
Well, then, you see that, okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, the proposed ordinance, um, for detached accessory dwelling units, they shall not exceed one-story in height of fifteen feet unless said accessory dwelling unit is constructed above a garage. Um, also allows for a junior accessory dwelling unit, uh, this is to be no more than five hundred feet. It has to consist of cooking facilities, including a sink, and it's not required to have a private bathroom. So it needs to be located within the single-family residential unit, does have to have its own kitchen, so its own cooking facilities with a sink, but it does not have to have its own private bathroom, it can utilize the bathroom of the primary dwelling unit.
But it says detached.
Ex, no, also allows, so that it's its own bullet, also allows for junior, uh, junior accessory dwelling units are their own.
Okay, so that, would that be detached from the house, though?
No, it has to be located within a single-family residential unit.
Within the single-family residence?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Um, this slide was taken from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and just for the purposes of, um, this being a handout to essentially walk a homeowner through whether they would be allowed, um, to have an accessory dwelling unit. If you're able to answer yes to all of the items on the left-hand of the screen, essentially you would be allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit, um, as set forth with the, the California's law. Um, the first is that you own your own single-family home. Two, that your home has, um, extra space either in the backyard, or it has, um, a garage that's detached in the backyard, or it has room, um, for a, um, unit with its own entrance within the single-family dwelling. And then the third is that your home, um, and I apologize, is, um, located within a half-mile of transit, or has enough space to provide one parking space. So if you can answer yes to all of those, you would be allowed to have one accessory dwelling unit per law. Um, and then, on the right-hand side, are the various options for the different types of accessory dwelling units. It walks through, um, attached or detached, um, it walks through a, a garage conversion, and it also, uh, walks through an addition. So just the various examples of what the state has set forth to qualify as an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so the first one says own a single-family home?
Yes.
All right. As a primary residence. Not just own a sing, I mean, someone can't own three or four single-family homes and then put accessory units on all of them if that's not their primary residence?
No, what the intent of that question is, is, is there a single-family residential unit on the parcel? If you can answer yes to that, you could qualify. If it's a duplex, no, you would not be able to qualify.
So let me, let me clarify, the state statute doesn't require owner occupation, but they all allow your ordinance to require that, and so staff felt to keep the residential neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood residential, it would be better to have an owner occupying one of the, either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling, but the state does not require that.
But we will.
We can by ordinance, and it is part of this ordinance.
Okay, all right.
Question.
Thank you for the clarification. Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
Um, so Stacy, by virtue of these examples that you've shown us here, uh, based on what the state is saying, is it also understood that with the parking requirement that needs to be provided, that, uh, the resident who's living in the unit has to, um, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to get to is that I'm, I'm concerned about whether or not there's gonna be a bunch of multiple cars here and not have a, enough parking space, you know, and maybe I can address that with our city attorney.
You're probably not gonna have enough parking, not, not the kind of parking that you want. Right now, we don't require a lot of parking for a single-family residence to begin with, so they're overparked to begin with, and then secondly, the ADU will only require one additional on top of that, so if the requirement is two-
Yes.
-for a single-family residence, they'll have to provide three. And, and the, the state does, I think the state is more interested in creating accessory dwelling units than they are-
Parking.
-relieving our parking issues, uh, locally. And I say that just in reading through this, they spend a lot of time talking about parking and not allowing the city to restrict ADUs because of parking. So, yes, it will cause, I'm, I'm thinking it will cause more off-street parking than what we would like to see here in Los Angeles.
Well, we have some neighborhoods where I get calls all the time about people saying they can't park on their own street, and I wanna know how, I, I wanna monitor, there's something that we can monitor with this, that when they go through the, the option of, of, of whether they're going to have an accessory unit, that will there be a question or, or, and a, uh, a way to, to have them sign off that they are providing off-street parking?
That's one of the findings prior to issuance of a building permit, so prior to issuance of a building permit, they have to clear zoning clearance, uh, which is a certificate that they would have to obtain. If they can meet all the findings of the requirements of this code, then they could be, they would be given clearance even prior to getting a building permit. So that's how we would ensure that they can provide that off-street parking space that they'd be required, if it's, if it's not contained within the single-family residential unit.
So let's be clear, I believe, excuse me if I'm wrong, a single-family residence in the city of Los Angeles is only required to have two parking spaces, is that correct?
Yes, so what the code reads, if it's one bedroom, it requires one-point-five spaces, if it's two or more bedrooms, it's only two spaces, and it does not specify, specify between covered or uncovered.
So most of the, most of the new homes you see in Los Angeles have a two-car garage or a three-car garage and either a three or two-car driveway, so that would be considered parking, and in this case, adding one, just taking up one of those spaces would satisfy this requirement, because the primary residence would only be required to have two spaces if it's a-
Yes.
And this primary, this accessory dwelling unit would be required to have one, so it's gonna automatically, the parking is not gonna keep someone from doing this unless it's an older home with maybe a one-car garage-
Mm-hmm.
-or no garage. That, that would be the only time parking would roadblock an accessory dwelling unit.
Our code enforcement is right there, and he's looking the other way, and, and, you know, we, we're gonna get calls on this, and we're gonna have to have some type of answer to where the poor people who live in this neighborhood will be able to, to park their cars, and I'm assuming there's gonna be a plot plan and a, uh, and so you're gonna go out and inspect to see if it's a, uh, qualifies for everything?
They need a building permit, and they, on top of that, so it's not just a building permit, um, that you would get, you have to get zoning clearance on top of it, so that's, um, a mini, a ministerial review that the city is allowed within the ADU law to require.
I'm, I'm trusting that's going to work. Uh, what about engineering or architecture, uh, well, actually engineering on, on the accessory unit?
It depends on how, what, uh, ma- It depends on how, what, uh, material and how the accessory dwelling unit will be built. If structural calcs will be needed. If, um, it's not needed, some engineering's not needed for a single-family residential dwelling. It just depends on the type of unit, how it's built, what, how it's being built, that structural calcs are needed.
But it, but it will be inspected for proper electrical?
It will be, electrical, plumbing, everything that is required of a building permit.
Do they need AC?
They will have to have, um, heating. Heating is what is mandatory, air conditioning is not.
Can we, can we require AC?
The building code.
Within the code?
No.
See, I just see substandard living here. That, that's what bothers me. I just see substandard living wi- with a lot of this and, and, and people just not providing the amenities that, uh, that they need for decent living spaces. So, I can't believe the state of California is this stupid, but what else is new? Um, okay. We have more questions, but go ahead. Yes, sir. Question?
Um, given an example like the Till Landing neighborhood we have, most of those are two, uh, car driveways. Pretty short driveways, I mean, they're very minimum, very congested street. So something like that would probably be very unlikely these would get permitted over there. So our really congested neighborhoods, the ones we have the biggest problems with, we may not even have any of these being allowed built in there.
Most likely, most likely not. You're absolutely right. As it is, those particular units are in a planned development that we're allowed to have smaller than standard lots. So where the standard is six thousand square feet, they were allowed to have five thousand square foot lots. So those primary dwelling units are already at the maximum setback. So you wouldn't be able to meet, then in the, in addition, the setbacks required for an accessory dwelling unit, which would be ten to the rear, five to the side, and ten to the primary dwelling structure. The primary dwelling structure is already maximizing and occupying all of the building envelope within that, that parcel. So you're absolutely right, it is not feasible within those types of.
So it's gonna be very unique parcels, not every parcel will qualify for this.
Not every parcel. It's gonna, um, primarily probably be in older areas. Areas that also have alley access would be a prime candidate. Garage conversions will be, I believe, where, uh, the majority we will see will be gar- garage conversions. Till Landing, for instance, um, using them. So if they did a garage conversion, those are only two-car garages. Um, and they then took out the covered parking, they would still be required to have the garage, the, the driveway open, which is only taking care of the primary dwelling unit. I can't see how they'd be able to get a third space on those units that are only fifty feet wide. So really, when you talk through, you know, what types of, where would these be located? Your Till Landing, even with the garage conversion, is not going to be feasible. Um, uh, maybe in the older neighborhoods, um, we, you could have a garage conversion that could work. Um, uh, but especially in the older neighborhoods that have alley access. That's, uh, where the lots are long and can meet those setbacks. Um, that's primarily where we're going to see detached accessory dwelling units.
So I got a phone call the other day about a certain street, and I'll talk to you about that later. And, and it said that, uh, you know, a lot of people have these illegal units as they are. So, and do we have, uh, so now if we bring this into compliance where these, these are gonna be habitable accessory units, they're gonna be constructed right, they're gonna be safe. And the ones that are just renting a subspace, we're gonna be able to, 'cause we'll have an ordinance, we can close those down then.
Yes, we already have that in place. So we, already in place, you need a building permit regardless. You need a building permit to have an accessory dwelling unit. So if you have somebody living in a shed.
Or in back, yeah.
Exactly, so if it's in substandard conditions, they're living in that tough shed, uh, without any heat, um, or running water, then it's substandard conditions. They didn't get a building permit to have that unit, it's, it's illegal now.
Alright, okay, go ahead, sorry.
So also within the permitting process, an accessory dwelling unit, uh, would require, so this is what would be, um, necessary to, to obtain an accessory dwelling unit. Um, it needs zoning clearance certificate from the Community and Economic Development Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Um, this is a ministerial review. And it can only be issued with finding that the plan for the accessory dwelling unit complies with all of the requirements of the zoning regulations, which would cover parking as well. After the certificate is issued, a building permit may be issued. So it has to meet all of those requirements. The Community and Economic Development have to make all of those findings that it remeets, meets all the requirements of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And then we can issue a certificate, which would allow then the property owner to go through the building permit process, be issued a building permit. Um, I do want to highlight that, um, the state of California um, only allows a ministerial review from the planning department and that's because it does not allow any type of discretionary land use decision to be made. So it does not permit an accessory dwelling unit to go before the planning commission. Um, it's specifically prohibited within the law. So utilities and fees, um, an accessory dwelling unit that is contained within existing space of a single-family residence or an accessory structure is not considered a new residential use. So no new or separate utility connections between the accessory dwelling unit and the utility is required. So we can't, um, require a new connection for water or sewer if it's contained within a, an existing single-family residence or an existing accessory structure that, so for a garage, for instance, that got converted. And even a detached garage or shed that got converted.
So it has to share the same waistline?
It would be able to connect to this, to that primary unit's, um, main, exactly, those lines.
Okay.
All other accessory dwelling units, so if it's a new accessory dwelling unit that's detached, it may require a new or separate utility connection between the accessory dwelling unit and the utility. Any connection for your capacity charge shall be proportionate to the burden, um, due to the size of the unit or number of plumbing fixtures. However, the city cannot force the accessory dwelling unit to provide a new utility connection. Um, so for instance, if PG&E requires a new electrical panel and is, it's required, then, um, and they need that electrical panel, then they would, um, put on that new utility service. However, the city cannot force them to put on a new, um, electrical panel for PG&E. So that's just an example. Um, if it, it's needed for, um, fire suppression, for, uh, maybe it is pressure, water pressure, and we need, um, a separate utility service. Um, we can state why we need it, but we cannot force accessory dwelling unit to provide a new utility connection. The building official, though, does have the ability within the law to require, um, or to essentially stay, say that for health and safety purposes, um, that the unit would need that additional, uh, utility.
So, so Mason, say they had a hundred amp panel and they filled it with circuit breakers and it was at capacity now. Um, and they could, so they'd have to put either a sub-panel in or a whole new panel with a whole new connection?
Well, they, it, with their plan, within their plan, they would, they would understand what they would require for that new dwelling. And if that would, if that dwelling required an additional service, I would imagine PG&E could, would suggest to, to put in a different service, separate service for that unit or bump up the residential, the main, the main service up to a two-hundred amp so it could, so it could provide a sub-panel up to a hundred.
They're gonna have to figure out how to make it work. Um, so I do wanna clarify, no accessory dwelling unit shall be allowed if the building official determines that there is no adequate water or sewer service to the property. So the building official can say that there isn't adequate water or sewer. We'd have to be able to make that determination and then no accessory dwelling unit would be allowed. And that's under section nine dash three point three zero zero nine D. That's within the requirements of the, that is within the ADU law.
Okay.
And there's nothing for handicapped accessibility, right?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
All applicable public service and impact fees shall be paid prior to occupancy. That's if they need a new connection. And we are anticipating, staff's anticipating minimal impact to city infrastructure associated with, you know, possibly additional landscaping, um, but would only have probably one bath and one kitchen. So it'd be very minimal to the city's infrastructure, um, whether these types of units would have an impact on our utilities.
What about school fees?
So if the unit is more than, I believe, four hundred and ninety-nine square feet, although I cannot speak for the school district, um, uh, that would be in the case of an addition. School fees are required. Um, the schools have a, a tiered, uh, fee system that's adopted by the state of California. Um, and so that is, um, full mitigation for all new housing units within the city of Los Banos, really within the state of California.
Okay, unless they agree to higher fees, is that correct?
No accessory dwelling units would be subject to any type of mitigation agreement.
Okay, alright.
Okay. Um, junior accessory dwelling units, uh, they are not required, as we previously stated, under the new accessory dwelling unit law. It's optional. So cities do have to provide it within the ordinance to allow it, but it's optional. It has to be adopted as it stated by ordinance. A junior accessory dwelling unit has, has, are, excuse me, no more than five hundred square feet and are typically bedrooms in a single-family residential dwelling unit that have an entrance into the unit from the main home and entrance to the outside from the junior accessory dwelling unit. A junior accessory dwelling unit must have cooking facilities, as it previously stated, including a sink, but it's not required to have a private bathroom. And the ordinance does require a permit. And the, the process, the requirement of the permit is a very important component of this. Um, that is so that the city can get credit with our regional housing needs allocation, with our housing element. We get credit for a, uh, it'd be considered either very low or low-income housing. Um, and so that building permit would be the way that the city would track that that additional housing unit is meeting the needs of our RENA, our regional housing needs allocation per the housing element.
Yeah, wait a minute. Mr. Jones, do you have a question first, or we're next in queue? Okay, alright, Mrs. Lewis?
So Stacy, um, that means that it, say a person has a three-bedroom home. They could take one of those bedrooms within the home and put kitchen facilities in it, um, in order to make this a junior dwelling.
Yes.
Okay, and they use the bathroom that everyone else uses in the home for the rest of the family?
It would have to have an entrance into the unit from the main home and an entrance to the outside.
So they can come in the front door of the main home and have a secondary entrance exit from that bedroom that's converted?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, the kitchen, though, is more like an efficiency kitchen. It's, uh, limited in its voltage and they only have to have a sink. Um, and they, um, I believe they can't have any gas at all. And so the, the kitchen.
Be like an electric tube burner.
Something like that, right? It wouldn't be like a full galley kitchen or anything. The real difference is they have access to the restroom area in the main, the main building, unlike a, unlike a ADU that's required to be self-contained within the unit.
So what's a stop a boarding house?
I don't know what your definition of a boarding house is.
Well, taking in boarders. I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, with these things and, and packing people in bedrooms. I mean, how, how do we, how do we prevent some of these things? So, so we don't have people that are just, I say lowlife, just turning their home into something other than a home or, or an accessory unit?
I don't know, I don't know how to answer that question. I don't even know. I think boarding houses are probably permitted in Los Banos, first of all.
They're permitted in the single-family residential zoning district, actually all residential zoning districts. Um, so it allows up to six unrelated persons. That was a requirement of the last housing element cycle. It required, um, prior to two thousand and ten for the city to change our zoning code to allow for six unrelated persons. That's a use by right. If it's beyond six unrelated persons, you need a conditional use permit.
So with this ordinance, does that mean they have to have to step it up with the, uh, with the accommodations?
They'd have to meet the requirements of an accessory dwelling unit. Um, if it's contained within the home, it can be a junior accessory dwelling unit. It has to, can't be more than five hundred square feet, has to meet those requirements. But still, if they wanted to make no changes to the home and just rent out a room, the code doesn't prohibit that. And the state of California has required cities to permit that within our zoning codes. So we have to allow up to six unrelated persons to live in a house.
Well, it's basically boarding anyway, because under this ordinance with the state, it says accessory, uh, dwelling unit shall not be rented or leased for less than thirty days. So, I mean, somebody can turn it over every thirty days if they choose to do so.
Okay.
Have any other, uh, cities adopted a policy yet?
Well, if they haven't adopted a policy, by default, it's the state's law. So by default, it's already a requirement, it's already allowed. It goes straight to a building permit with no city discretion. What we're proposing is to require, to be in compliance with the state law, but also require ministerial review with requirements that the state allows the city to provide. So regulations that the state has said that cities can, can require.
So you can have six, six additional people in your house and also have one of these?
Technically, you can have a single-family residence with an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
Okay. So public hearing, public hearing notice was published in the Los Banos Enterprise on March eighth, two thousand and nineteen. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So staff is recommending that the plan, that the city council opened the public hearing and then closed the public hearing and waived the first in, reading and introduce ordinance number one-one-seven-zero by title. And that concludes my presentation.
Um, sure, can I go to the public hearing and then you can have more questions? Is that okay, or do you wanna ask it now? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, Stacy, so, um, did you explain the advantage of having the junior dwelling unit? I think you were supposed to go into that with us.
So we can go back, um, that was the last slide prior to, uh, the public hearing notice. So essentially, um, as we're being required to, let's go back. So accessory dwelling units, these are all the requirements. And since accessory dwelling units are going to be required by law, um, a junior accessory dwelling unit, um, the only clarification is that it doesn't need, um, a full kitchen, um.
Right, I, I understand those requirements by the state that you went over.
Because it's so similar, the justification from staff was that, why not? Essentially was where staff sat at it, but it is optional. If the council does not wanna allow it, then it just requires that if that person wanted to convert that bedroom to an accessory dwelling unit, they'd have to have a kitchen, essentially. Um, because they can use the main, if it's within a single-family residential unit, it can use the main unit's, um, restrooms. It's not required to have its own.
That's the city's justification at this point.
Essentially, it's so similar. The real difference is an efficiency kitchen and the definition of an efficiency kitchen that, um, at least we do get credit with our RENA numbers for that conversion versus it happening anyways and us not getting credit for it. Because it's not allowed without it being in an ordinance.
Yes. Go ahead.
So on the junior accessory dwelling units, we would typically see that for like a garage conversion, right?
A garage conversion could comply, or a bedroom conversion, where you have access from the main unit and access out.
So it seems like most applicants, if they're going for that, they're going to convert a garage since it's the simplest unused space.
It already has access out?
Has access out.
Four hundred is usually the smallest garage, is about four hundred square feet. Would you know off the top of your head?
So they can take out a corner or something if it goes over four, or goes over five hundred? And so that does count towards our housing element though, right?
Yes, and that's the justification and staff's head, well, at least we'd get credit for it. Otherwise, we would see a bedroom being created and we wouldn't get the credit for it.
So, one last question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I've talked during two things at once here. Go ahead.
Parking requirements for all of this is only external. It has nothing to do with parking your vehicles inside a garage to create spaces for additional vehicles for these tandem units.
So the code does, our code does not require covered parking. So it does not require a car to be parked within a garage or that the, that the primary dwelling has to provide a garage. It just says it has to provide off-street parking and two spaces at a minimum. So one driveway is sufficient to meet the code standards. Some cities though, and if I can clarify, some cities do require within their ordinance covered parking, which is satisfied with the garage space.
But not for the ADU, I don't think the ADU could-
Wait a minute, go ahead, go ahead.
The, cities may require covered parking for the primary dwelling, but you can't require covered parking for the ADU.
Right, and that's the only area that I'm concerned about, is this new law.
So, like I explained earlier, I think just based on the average house having two, two garage spaces and two driveway spaces, and only required to have, so they have four spaces, only required to have two, the ADU really doesn't have to manufacture an additional space because there are already enough space. There's already one space to accommodate that space. If that makes sense. So if you already have four spaces on your property with your primary residence and you, you have an ADU, then come onto your residence, you don't have to provide any more parking because you already have it.
But you're talking about four spaces being internal as well as external?
Four, four spaces total.
Total.
The average, the average house in Los Banos has four total spaces.
That's two inside and two out.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. This new law does not require that the two internal spaces be counted. And if, you know, you have someone who, a household of, you know, a couple of people and maybe another adult person, and they may or may not park inside of their garage, the garage may be occupied in use for something else. So if, if you have two cars that are parked in the driveway, then that doesn't leave a space for a third car if it's a two-car driveway approach?
Exactly, but it would meet the one-space requirement for the ADU because there are two spaces in the garage. So as I said earlier, this will create more parking on the street. The, there's only really two known solutions to that. Permitted parking, which I'm not sure you want to go down that road. And also, staff and I have been talking about raising the minimum limits for a single-family residence to more than just two spaces based on the square footage of the residence. Because right now, if you built a four-thousand-square-foot home, you could get away with two parking spaces. And-
But lots, lot sizes are decreasing too, by virtue of the type of homes that we're building, building, still building mega homes and the lot sizes are a lot smaller than what they were twenty, thirty years ago. So it, it makes it really difficult.
So if you require, if you require more parking for a single-family residence over a certain square footage, you're not going to have to, you're not going to be able to build that mega home on a small lot because you're going to have to provide ample parking for that family to begin with. So really, the parking standards for a single-family dwelling are really deficient. However, even if you change that now, it probably would only apply to developments in the future. And possibly any development that doesn't have a current map on it.
Well, I'm just throwing this out as something, you know, I'm not saying that we, we're going to do this, but I'll, I'll give you, for instance, in San Jose, in older residential neighborhoods, they did establish parking permits or, you know, off-street parking where you don't have that kind of overcrowding of parking in residential neighborhoods. So I, I've seen it where it's not just new neighborhoods that they try to do that kind of establishment. It, it just kind of became a blanket thing within the community to reduce that kind of congestion. So I, I don't know how we're going to handle this, but I, I can see, I'm, I'm just hoping that we're not going to have a whole lot of these kinds of units.
From a practical standpoint, lot coverage is going to determine whether you can have one of these on your property. And I would guess, most, most of your typical lots are not going to be able to meet the lot coverage and add an ADU. Because you're required to have a certain square footage for your backyard, total coverage, front and back, and that starts cutting down the area that you could place one of these and meet all of the setbacks.
And a parking plan will be part of the review. Okay. So when we're talking, everything we're talking about, when we talk about taking in people, these are all owner-occupied, correct?
Yes, so that's what's proposed within our ordinance, is that the owner has to live in one of the two units and it has to be deed-restricted so that future buyers know the city's ordinance and rules.
So if these are rental units and people are starting to take in people, that's a little bit different then, right?
Well, the owner would need to live in one of the two units, they could rent out one of them.
No, if they didn't, if it was just a rental.
No, they have to live in one of them.
But I mean, taking in people, the other part that we talked about, that if someone's renting a house from somebody.
So if they live in that primary dwelling, or even on the accessory dwelling and they're renting out all of the bedrooms, they technically could do that, or they could have roommates. They could live in the primary structure and have various roommates living there as well.
I'm talking about someone buys an income property. Someone buys an income property and then they want to take in a whole bunch of people in that income property.
They'd have to live in one of the two units, the owner would have to live in one of the two units.
Okay, or nobody can take in anyone, rental units, no.
Nothing.
Okay. Even if they didn't have an accessory unit?
Well, no. So-
If it was an income property and the owner lived in another state or another city?
Then he can't have an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not talking about accessory dwelling, I'm talking about taking in other people.
It's to the boarding, it's, now we're, I, tonight, and I apologize, we're not prepared to answer boarding and the rental of various rooms.
I don't think, based on this law, if someone wants to build an accessory unit, that you're going to have a absentee owner, absentee landlord wanting to do it.
No, we understand that.
Because he's, he's not going to-
I got that, I'm just going down a different path.
Or she's not going to do that.
She can get me an answer later, no problem. Okay. Alright. Okay, so, any other questions from council before we open up the public hearing? Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance number one-one-seven-zero, as read by title? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the, uh, public portion, uh, public hearing and bring it back to council level. Okay, so I'm just going to run my, my list here. The AC is optional, right?
An air conditioning unit is optional.
Okay, air conditioning, and we cannot require that in the ordinance?
Because it's not a requirement of the building code.
Okay, alright. Electrical subpanels, that's going to be the determination of the fire chief and to see if service is adequate for what we need, correct?
It'll be a part of the building plans.
Okay.
And the building permit.
Okay. School fees can be charged at the level that's designated, correct?
Yes, they will be charged at the level.
That will be charged at the level. Okay? Okay, smoke alarms, those are part of the, the-
Yes, that's a requirement, carbon monoxide and fire alarms, smoke alarm systems are required with every building permit.
Okay, handicapped accessible doesn't apply?
No.
Alright. Self-contained unit shower, toilet, kitchen is, now who has to have those and who doesn't again?
A junior accessory dwelling unit does not have to have a private bathroom, it can share the bathroom with the primary dwelling.
That's within the structure?
Yes.
Okay, but the other one does?
Yes.
Okay, alright. And there's no minimum square foot per person?
Not per person.
Okay, design standards will apply, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Very narrow roads, if it's not going to accommodate the off-street parking and doesn't qualify, they can't do it?
Yep.
Okay? If a home is sold with an accessory unit, it's going to be in the deed restriction?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's see. And if they're storing, we just passed an ordinance for storing campers and automobiles in the rear? All that garbage is going to have to be cleaned out because they can't have all these things in, in one area?
They have to meet those setbacks, and those have setbacks also to any structures, habitable structures as well.
Okay, alright, so if someone puts a motorhome back there and a couple of cars, like we talked about?
Most likely not going to meet the coverage requirement.
Alright, thank you. Let's see. Oh, how does this affect our Prop two-eighteen study? Any, any way with the, the increasing waste and treatment? Are we going to have any problem with that because, because now we might have more flow?
No, they're considered to be existing residential units and not an impact on the system.
Okay.
So if the primary dwelling, it has to be with the primary dwelling unit, it's already associated with that unit.
Okay, at some point, if we could find out whether the cities have adopted it, I'd like to do that too. Okay. An alley access is available, right?
If it is available, it can be utilized.
Okay. Let's see, I repeated that question. Oh, if there's a second story in a house, okay, does that expand the footprint of the original house? And so if it's a five-thousand-square-foot cement foundation, or four-thousand-square-foot cement foundation, the second story, does that limit anything? Or is that just considered a second story within the same footprint of the house? I mean, it doesn't make it a five-thousand or a six-thousand-square-foot, per, per footprint?
Yes, so you would count both stories as a part of the footprint of the house.
Oh, you would?
Yeah.
And that would limit the size of the lot even further, right?
Oh, you're referring for coverage?
Coverage, yeah.
Uh, no, this is, this is building coverage, how much is occupying land?
On the original footprint?
Yes, so it only count that first floor. When it comes to floor coverage, what we're looking at is how much open space there is.
Okay. Alright, and I just see a council that's got to come back to us whatever way we have to do it, and that is, we have got to have more code enforcement. Because this is not going to work any other way. I'm almost finished. And the parking, we talked about the, the limits on the parking. Okay? And, Mr. Jones? Oh, Mrs. Santos, you're next, do you have a question?
Uh, no, I just wanted to briefly, I have a few statements if you don't mind after you're done.
Okay, alright, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just to confirm, so if I build this for my own property, I want to sell my house, we'd have deed restrictions recorded ahead of time before I may even build it. And so when I go to sell it, it would be known to the buyer in a title report that I have to be an owner-occupant. If not, there is penalties. Basically, the first and foremost I can think of is that that unit would have to be torn down or turned back into just an accessory unit. That would be it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so-
It would not be a legal accessory dwelling unit.
It would not be illegal, so then it just comes down to what codes we have in place to enforce that ordinance, right?
Yes.
So going back to what you say, Mike, with enforcement.
Right, right, and that's where we need more help.
Thank you.
And the, they can only have one of the choices, correct? They can't, they can't have like a mini, they can't have an accessory, and, and then a detached two?
No. Once you have one, even a junior accessory dwelling unit, you've exhausted your accessory dwelling unit option.
Okay, okay, alright, okay. Alright, that's my two pages. Mrs. Santos, Mr. Jones, do you have any more questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you very much, and I know in the past we had the, which I believe you mentioned, the teal landing where they had the, essentially accessory, the ADUs in the back of the houses where they built them into the actual plan of the houses.
In the college greens?
Yes, there we go. So I, I know we probably don't have much of that coming up anymore due to the size of the lots getting smaller and whatnot. But I imagine, just, I guess just for clarification, this would follow on into any future building and whatnot?
Yes.
So that everyone's compliant, okay. And I was, and I think it's already been answered as well, but I know you had mentioned the packing of houses, which seems like it would be after the, the, everyone's up to the codes for fire and whatnot. It would seem more of a code enforcement issue if people are packing their houses that way. At least that's, that's just something I want to mention, is that correct?
Yeah, so I mean, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Okay, good?
Yes.
Alright. Alright. Does anyone have anything else to say? Yes, Mr. Jones?
Um, this is for our fire chief. If there is an issue, because I know, dealt with quite a few rentals, I know HUD recommends no more than two persons plus, two persons per bedroom plus an infant. But that's not always what we get, we get quite a bit more, some places we get houses loaded up with people. Can our fire chief make the determination if it's safe or not? And does your rule in on it override everything else?
We, uh, we currently enforce it quite often regarding finding unsafe to occupy residence or detached structures that, that are already being occupied. If we find unsafe living conditions, electrical issues, plumbing issues, health issues, we, we, we address those issues on an ongoing basis. I would have to say regarding this, this at least gets us to have them get a permit. We will be, we will be inspecting them. And if we find something that's been, has been built and they haven't done that, we can, we can enforce that they stop and desist and make, to make sure that they apply to it. We have structures all over town that have these living structures, or people are occupying structures, sheds, different things that we address on an ongoing basis. This, this gives us the ability to regulate it more and make sure that these places are safe for occupants and that are, that the people that are living there and in the original home are safe as well. If that answers your question, we, 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 I post, as a building official, I post unsafe to, unsafe to occupy structures quite often because of this.
So to be a little bit more direct, if I have a three-bedroom house and there's four adults living in each bedroom, so twelve adults living in the house, is that something you see as an issue? As far as safety, something that you would question or address or look into further from there?
I would probably question it, and probably if you have that many people in a structure, there's other issues causing additional problems in regards to health and safety and, and access and amount of accumulation of items in the structure or around the structure, which will cause other problems. Overloading of circuits, PG&E will, will address the, the use of excessive power, whether or not their, their meter can address it as well. So it, it could, it could cause us to, to move forward into other actions if, if we see it, it needed be. I really, I think that's really about it, and regarding the, the amount of people. I, I really, I think that's really about it, and regarding the, the amount of people, when we have that many people, we, we have other issues that cause it to be a problem, and we address that with the property owners.
Okay, thank you.
So you're an extension to code enforcement then?
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay. Alright, anyone else? Okay. See, that only took an hour and a half, okay. Alright, so let's go to, um, ordinance number 1170. Now, I want to tell you, everyone, that this is just your first shot at this, because this is just, uh, the first reading and introduction. So if you think anything else, we've got ample time, alright?
We have to come back for a first reading if any changes, I just want to clarify, if any changes are made.
Right.
We have to start again with a first reading.
Right, right. But we have a second shot at the apple here, this, I shouldn't say shot, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, so, ordinance number 1170, amending and restating Article 30, Chapter 3, Title IX of the Los Angeles Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling units. This is the first reading and introduction. Mr. Jones? Oh, that was just a take, is that, who wants to make a motion? Mr. Santos?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance, I mean, sorry, not waive, uh, to introduce.
Wait, you're right, you're good.
Sorry. Waive the first reading of ordinance number 1170.
Hey, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Wait a minute, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by, uh, Santos and second by Jones to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1170. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried, Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to introduce, uh, the, uh, introduce ordinance number 1170, as stated by.
Mr. Jones?
Second that.
Okay, now we're, 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 uh, voting on the introduction of ordinance number 1170. It's motioned by Johnson Santos and second by Jones. Uh, Director Maloney?
Maria Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Louis Volta?
Yes. Motion carried. Public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of resolution to update the housing element of the Los Angeles General Plan pursuant to state law. Uh, C1, City Council Resolution Number 6062, adopting a 2018 annual report on the status of the housing element and general plan and progress in its implementation. Director Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, um, and City Council. So this is our annual progress report, which we are required by law, um, to provide uh, to the public, and it's to be adopted by the City Council annually. Um, so the government code requires each jurisdiction to prepare and submit an annual progress report on its housing element by April 1st of each year. It's required to contain the status of the housing element and our progress in its implementation, the progress in meeting the city's regional housing needs, and any actions taken by the city towards completion of those programs. Apologize, I'm not keeping up. Uh, it's required to be reviewed and considered by the city's legislative body, which is the City Council. And then, after approval by the City Council, it is required to be submitted to the Office of Planning and Research and the California Department of Housing and Community Development, but it does not require their approval. They just need, um, to have the annual progress report for the city to be in compliance with our housing element. So the purpose, um, of this annual progress report is first and foremost to remain compliant with the government code and the housing element law. So we're required by law to do this every year. Um, it's to update the City Council on housing development and implitation, implementation, excuse me, of the housing element. And it's also to ensure eligibility for state grant funding. Uh, the proposed annual progress report ensures that the city will remain in compliance uh, for future grant opportunities and state funding, which could be CDBG, as I previously stated, with the general plan amendment and zone change item. Um, it could be Caltrans grants, SB2 funding, um, and potentially gas tax money as the state is indicating or proposing. So the 2018 housing activity, we are required, um, and there's a detailed matrix within, um, the staff report, uh, which is the, the form, is the report that the city submits to the Office of Planning and Research and, um, the Housing and Community Development Department of the state. Um, so we have to, um, excuse me, how does that say Mariposa County? I'm not quite sure, but it's not Mariposa County, it's Merced County. Um, and I apologize, um, let's see if that goes away, there we go. Um, in 2018, our building activity, very low income, we had zero units built. We had one unit built in the low-income range, which was a mobile home unit. And we had a moderate income, four units built in the moderate income bracket, and then 257 units built in the above moderate income bracket. Um, the, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development has a calculator which helps, um, all jurisdictions identify where that unit qualifies in its income brackets. So it, uh, requires the jurisdiction to break down whether, um, it's primarily owner occupied, um, or whether it was designed for rental purposes. Uh, most all new builds, uh, the majority of them are owner occupied. Um, but we do have some instances, especially in infield, that they're intended for rental purposes, and the city's aware of that. Um, so implementation, the city has eight goals that are within our housing element um, that were adopted by the council, but were a requirement of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, so this, these goals are the foundation that the state requires for all jurisdictions. So we're not the only ones that have these goals. So Goal 1 is that we're to provide adequate sites for residential development and alternate housing choices at affordable costs for all segments of the city. And there's, um, if you go through the report, um, through this matrix, it talks about the various goal and then the programs within the goal. In a Goal 1, there is all the way to, it's Program 1, and 1A, all the way to 1D. And within this Goal 1 is the rezoning, the shortfall carryover rezoning from the previous planning cycle that the City Council, um, approved tonight. Um, so that zone change will become effective within 30 days of adoption of the ordinance, which, um, starts after tonight. Um, so thank you, Council, for approving that, that will help us achieve our program within Goal 1, um, which is in 1D, which requires the shortfall carryover. Um, Goal 2 is that we're to remove governmental constraints. Um, so this can be achieved through permit streamlining, um, through efficiency in our permitting process. Um, and this is, we're also supposed to be looking annually and continuously at our permitting process and finding ways to remove governmental constraints. Goal 3 is to encourage the maintenance improvement and rehabilitation of the city's existing housing stock and encourage the maintenance and upkeep of existing affordable housing. Um, so it requires specific nuisance ordinances, which the city is in compliance with. It also encourages that the city apply for grant funding, um, from various sources, whether it's from the state or federal level to help with, um, residential rehabilitation and improvements. Goal 4 is to achieve energy efficiency in housing activities. Uh, we achieve this goal, uh, within all new developments, it's always a condition of approval within every tract map. Uh, it's also a requirement in that we adopt, um, well, currently we're using the 2016 California Building Code, but we always have the most current building code, which we utilize, and, uh, which already has, uh, requirements for energy efficiency. Um, so the state, uh, the city is, is continuously meeting that requirement. Goal 5, we ensure that all residents have access to housing. Um, this can be done, um, through looking for various grant funding sources for, say, first-time homebuyer, which the city applied for with CDBG. So we're always looking for funding sources, um, and various agencies to partner with. Um, it's partnerships with Merced County Housing Authority is also another way that we can achieve this goal, in which we do, and these are ongoing efforts that, um, staff is continuously achieving and implementing. Goal 6 is to increase the percentage of homeowners in the city and provide adequate information on all possible housing assistance programs, distribute to homeowners, developers, and other residents. So currently, right now, we do not have any homeowner assistance program, but like I said, we apply, applied for CDBG funding. Um, and if we do secure that funding, we will notify all, um, we will distribute to all homeowners, developers, and residents within the community that we have that, um, funding source available. Goal 7 is that we maintain an adequate percentage of affordable rental units within the, the city to accommodate all income groups and family types. Um, this is an ongoing effort, we contact, we're in contact with affordable rental properties, and this is to maintain, to ensure that they're maintaining, um, their units, uh, as affordable and that they're not at-risk units, which we don't have any that are on the verge of at-risk. Yes.
Compared to the Bay Area, we are very affordable. That is, or is it just within your jurisdiction?
Well, it only applies to our region, Merced County, that's all that we get credit for. Um, the city also has maintained programs for the purpose, um, and, and we're always active in doing so, in finding funding programs for rehabilitation and targeting affordable rental units. So, um, um, like I said, so that's the CDBG rehab program, we have, um, existing loans that were issued, um, several years ago that we continuously to maintain and report, so we're continuing that program, which helps achieve this goal. And Goal 8, we encourage new development projects for special need groups. Um, one such project was the Overland Court Project, which was for senior housing, which was for affordable senior housing. Um, if you look at our matrix of, um, how we fit in the regional housing needs allocation, um, back in 2016 and 17, um, 2016 specifically, so it would be year three of this cycle, we received significant credit for those units that qualified as very low, low, and moderate income. Primarily, all of those units that were built, which were, um, 70 residential units, uh, fell under the category of very low or low, uh, which was an amazing project, and it helped us fulfill, um, that goal. But that's a continuous goal over the planning period, that's something we're continuously, uh, it's ongoing, and we're always encouraging development for those special needs groups, which consist of, um, employee housing, um, farmworker housing, um, and also special needs groups, uh, those with disabilities and seniors. So public comment, public hearing notice was published in the Los Angeles Enterprise on March 8th. As of today's date, no comments have been received, um, and the city has not received any testimony or written comments. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 6062, adopting the 2018 Annual Housing Element Progress Report. I would also ask that, um, the council, um, open the public hearing and also pl- close the public hearing to meet the requirements of the annual progress report, reporting process. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of council? Okay, I'll open a public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6062, so anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And do I have a motion or questions or anything else, statements? Mr. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion, um, so we're gonna make a motion to, sorry, um.
Adopt City Council Resolution 60.
Thank you very much. Uh, make a, make a mo- like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6062.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Motion by Santos, second by Jones, to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6062. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, carried. Okay, we're gonna take a break, um, at the most 10 minutes, but we should be back soon. Okay, let's go on to item eight. Consideration of adoption of city council resolution number six zero six three, accepting the wastewater treatment plant headworks project as complete and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion with Merced County Recorder. And we're going to go to our public works director, Mr. Faison.
Good evening. Tonight, we, we are looking for an action to accept city, the adoption of resolution number six zero six three that will accept the wastewater treatment plant headworks project as complete and authorize the manager, city manager to file a notice of completion and authorizes the public works director to release the two and a half percent retention after thirty-five days after the recording. Usually, these items appear on your consent agenda, but tonight, we wanted to just present, present a little brief to you. My assistant public works director, Greg Pimentel, and my wastewater treatment plant supervisor, Jeff Bondi, will be doing a little PowerPoint after just to show you what the improvements are. But just to give you some, some notice what this is, this is a five point seven million dollar original contract. Change orders for about three hundred thousand dollars, about five, a little over five percent of the budget. So it's a six million dollar project that, that we have completed. And our current permit allows a per day, million gallons per day, four point nine million gallons a day. That's our current permit. We're actually, that's the highest we can go. We're actually permitted up to four point oh right now. We're only using about two point seven to two point eight million gallons per day since the, I guess it's, Los Angeles Foods? Since Los Angeles Foods hasn't been operating, we lost about five hundred gallons a day, so that helped with that flow, which they'll be slowly building back up, but I don't have to go that high. But so what we're, so with this improvement, we should be allowed to go to our permit max of four point nine. So if you're at, roughly if we're at three and we were four point nine, that gives us a lot, a little bit of room, not a lot, but a little bit of room for development and industry. We will submit a request into the state water resources control board through our engineer to allow us to go to that maximum level. It should be a slam, but nothing is lately has been a slam with the state water resources control board. So we'll, we may have to work on this a little bit to get what they, all they want. When we started the project, it was pretty much understood when we finished this is what happened, but we'll, we'll see how that goes, but we will be on that pretty, pretty well. So we are looking for that, to have these approvals. Had an excellent contractor, did a great job, did a lot of differences on the plans that really are going to help the operations out there. So if that's okay, the action would be to, to adopt that resolution. But if it's okay with you now, we'll go over to Greg and he can start doing a PowerPoint to show you the actual structure out there and stuff. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. The project that we did out there at the plant enabled the city to be, to actually get over a major hurdle and, and put us in a position for the future that, where we want to be, as, as Mark alluded to. And so, we just wanted to show you a few pictures. If you haven't been out there in the last year or so, then you wouldn't recognize some of the work that's gone on out there. If you've never been out there, it's not, you know, a point of interest necessarily. But it is our wastewater treatment plant, and we are pretty proud of the, the work that's been done. It was, it was a long time coming. And in, in this picture here, it's basically an overview of the site. And the, you won't be able to read it, you might be able to see it on your screens, but the buildings in yellow were the existing buildings that were out there. The structures in blue, outlined in blue, are the new buildings. The larger blue areas, the new headworks building. The buildings in the middle between the headworks and the lab are the electrical building and the backup generator. And then each of the ponds, you'll see two of them illustrated here, each of the ponds received a, a new sampling platform. So that's the picture. But if you haven't been out there, this is not, we're, we're not trying to show you the equipment that was used on this project. All we're wanting to show you is, is this is a picture from the lab where Jeff and his staff do the testing from. And it's looking out towards the area. You'll see to the right in the picture, there's a little set of stairs. That's where the new headworks actually was going to be installed. And I have a picture showing you the new headworks. That power pole had to be moved during our project with the contractor and his ability to work with PG&E and, and our efforts went very smooth because we had to get temporary power while they started the construction so that they could start moving this pole. There were that, that pole and another one in the middle of the yard that were removed from this project or with this project, and the utilities were put underground. But in that picture right there, that's the direction from the lab where the existing influence is, and that's where the, the pipes were going to go. This is PG&E. They had come in and, and started to remove the pole out there. In this picture here, you can see that in the background is the lab. That's still, still visible there on the right. Directly behind the pipe is the old headworks building. The pumping station out there is probably, that pumping station is somewhere between a third and half the size of our, our, our new facility. That is the pipe that was going to be run along that green line from over near the lab over to this manhole. And this manhole here was, all the water that we send out to the plant goes through this manhole and over to the new headworks. The gentleman standing there on the left, his name was also Jeff. The electrical contractor, his name was Jeff. This was the general contractor's superintendent, his name was Jeff. Our supervisor, his name is Jeff. So if we had any problems out there, we didn't know who to blame. But, but the project went really, really well. GSE Construction did a super job. Jeff can attest to the fact that these guys came in here even after the project was designed and gave us advice on eliminating something or rearranging something for, for a better, for a better service and, and better accessibility at, at the site. This is the site when it's at, standing up on the, the levees near pond one, and you're looking back towards the shop, and the lab is over to the left, and this is the construction underway. At this time, there's another shot of it. You can see there's this slide and another slide that has the rebar being assembled. In, in this project, there was over a hundred and twenty tons of steel put in, in the structure, in the walls of the structure, in the floors, and in, in the headworks itself. So, and, and I'm, and I'm not sure if it includes, I, I tried to get the number, but I don't think it includes, we, we switched it from pouring asphalt out there to concrete because it'll last longer, it's better. The contractor did it for the same price. So we, we took him up on that. I don't think it includes the additional concrete. I think the concrete number that I'm going to give you is, is just for the structure itself, and we put nearly sixteen hundred yards of concrete out there in the structure. So it's, it's a lot of work. This is a picture that's just showing the construction site. There's a drilling auger there on the right of the screen, and it's, it's drilling something. I don't think it was one of the monitoring wells because the monitoring wells were already in, but this is probably the same drill that they used to put in three, not monitoring wells. They were dewatering wells for pumping the water away from the structure so that they could build it. This is looking at the structure. It's still being formed up. The walls are, are being put, put together. The, it's being set up for the slab and everything like that. And this is from up on the levy between ponds one and two. This is a look down inside. This is down inside the wet well where the, all the water comes into. None of it was brought in there yet. This electrical panel was specifically, I believe, for the DuPerron system of screening the solids out. And that was the electrical panel that was being placed over near the, the new station. This is the partial flume. That doesn't mean it's a partial flume. Partial is the name of the flume. And it is put in the structure when the water's pumped out. That's what measures the amount of flow that we get. That's how we can gauge how much water's going through or into our, our ponds on a daily basis.
Is that fiberglass?
It is, I believe. Yeah. This is, this picture here shows the, the electrical building, and in front of it is the slab where the generator was going to go. That telephone pole in the back was going to be removed. It's kind of hard to see in this picture, but right behind that is, is where the old headworks is still, was still main, maintaining our flow at, at this particular time. This is the electrical building on the inside, finished. And all of the panels that were previously in the lab and a couple of panels that were in the headworks itself have now all been relocated and programmed into this electrical building. It has enough room, I think, to finish to get us to the eight million gallons, if that was to ever happen, on the, a wall that doesn't have any panels there on the left. And it also has some storage for spare parts and things like that. There's doors at both ends. It's quite a nice room to do your, take your readings from. Here's the structure. It's getting closer to being built. These are five of the six pumps. Five pumps were installed. One was just capped off. And if we were ever able to, if we ever needed it, we would be able to do that. We currently only run at any given day. And now with the Los Angeles Foods back open again, we might run two pumps full-time on a, on a, on a full-time basis. But the, there's a redundancy to be able to take pumps out and service them and to be able to already have it ready for expansion. This is just a picture of those two aluminum sampling platforms that allows the, the operators out there to go out and take samples out of the pond. We had, previously had some old homemade ones that we had made ourselves to, to take samples out. And this makes it a little safer and, and sanitary, so to speak. This is a picture from up on, up on the ponds, up by the ponds again, just if you were to. if you were to, from that previous slide, it was looking out at the ponds. This one here is just, all they did was turn around. This is the generator, or the electrical room and the generator that's already been installed. That generator right there could probably not only serve the, the plant out there today, it would, it would serve it all the way up to eight million gallons. But right now, we could probably service a couple of our subdivisions with that if we needed to. There's a picture from, on the levy between the ponds. That's the headworks done and in operation. We had to, before the, before the old headworks could be shut off and we, and we opened the valve to this one, it was tested for a week just running on water, potable water, not, or just untreated, or treated water, I should say. Was not, it was not wastewater going through there. In case there was any problems, they didn't want to have to go in there and fix it with wastewater going through there. It, it worked very well, and we ended up just about, I think it was right before Thanksgiving, we were able to transfer it over, or transfer it over to the, to this new system. And then after it ran on the, on the water for another week, or on the wastewater for another week, then we went ahead and scheduled the demolition of the old headwork structure. This is the DuPerron compactor. And this is where the waste is collected on, on the, on the rakes. And it goes down in, into this machine. It's compacted there and then out the, the opposite side of where the motor is there, it'll go out a chute and down into a trailer. Those are the two. There's, there's room for a third one if we ever needed one. But those are the two screening rakes. And so the wa, the rakes will, will cycle through there. When the water comes through there, it will attract all the solids. And when it gets to a point where there's a certain amount of back pressure, the, the, the rakes and the, and the pulleys, the belts will, will rotate it a little bit and it'll dump it into that DuPerron and press out the water and, and send it out to waste, which we can now take to the landfill. And we don't have to wait until it dries out in our open bays. That's just a picture. That's from the other side. We were using the backhoe in the beginning until we got our trailer in. And then, so where that backhoe's at, that's where the trailer sits. The solids come out of there. And as soon as they get into the trailer and the trailer's full enough, we've got time. And if we have to, put the backhoe back in there for a minute. But we have time to get it out to the landfill and dispose of the solids. And it, it collects more solids than, than we did in the past. This is the, another shot of, this is in operation there. After it was in operation, this is, the project's almost completed. You can see it's November 29th. That was the equipment demoing the old headworks building. That's a shot of the, of the whole facility from up on top of the new headwork station. And looking down at the generator, the lab's on the left, the shop's in the back. We keep equipment there on that warehouse on the right. We want to, you'll see that in most of, around the, we, we did add, part of one of the change orders that we did was we asked them to put a little extra gravel. So they, they put rock in, in and around the well where they were just going to grade it out. And we felt that this would help with erosion and give it, just kind of finish the project a little better. Around that one shed where you see the backhoe is right there, I've asked Jeff to, to order some, some more gravel and when the weather gets a little better, and we're, we're going to finish it off with some, some of the same kind of rock right there. And we really think that it'll make the facility look presentable for, for anybody that goes out there. And that's just a picture from where the old, this is standing over behind the lab, looking at the new headworks, the generator, electrical building. And the, the, the old headworks is completely gone. And that's it. So I did want Jeff to come up and just kind of summarize. Jeff, if you would, just share with you what his thoughts were about the project because it...
Yeah. And while Jeff's coming up, one thing to note about this, two things. Number one is we went through the Super Bowl halftime, which is your biggest flow. Even, even, even at the lowest watched Super Bowl, it's still your biggest flow, Super Bowl halftime, and no problem. But the more, the second most important thing is this $6 million is paid for. There's no bonding in this. We paid for that out of development fees and our monthly fees, both. It's, it's got, it had restricted funds and unrestricted funds, and it's, it carries no debt to the city at this time. Thanks, Jeff.
And mildly comment is very, very good to only have 5% worth of change orders on a project of this scope. So kudos.
And, and I would say, you know...
Kudos to the project management staff.
Yeah. And when you look at that, I would say about 3.5% to 4% happened to be with a PG&E change order that really was a result of, of getting the right kind of power out there. So it was something the contractor had no control, which I agree. We were very happy about that. Thank you. Jeff, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So I'm here for any questions you may have. This project was needed. We were at the point where we're constantly maintaining the new station up, working on it, maintenance on it was kind of becoming a nightmare. We're at points where it was a three-pump station. We were running on two pumps quite a bit. That's not ideal, obviously. So if, if we, at the time, two pumps were needed just to run what we were flowing. So if one of those went down, then we were going to be bringing in a portable pump, trying to keep up with it. So, yes. And it did on occasion happen just overnight or that type of thing. So I don't know how old the old building was. It's way before my time, I believe, before Greg's time. And Greg's been here with the city for 30 years. So they're talking something like, in the 70s maybe or something, they built this. So you're looking at 40 something years.
Ancient history, yeah.
So, yeah, it's, yeah, way back in the 70s. Yeah. It could be, I don't know. So this is definitely a project that is going to make our life better and the city's life better. As Greg said, or as Mark said, this should get us to the 4.9 million. So that's going to allow us, obviously, growth that we're looking at. If some business was to come in and say, hey, we're going to want to send you another couple hundred thousand gallons or 300,000, we can take that now. We have the capacity to do that. So, and then, of course, with the six pump added, at some point, way when I'm gone, we could go to eight million gallons if we, if possible. But, so if you have a question, I, I can answer, otherwise.
Well, I, I'd just like to tell you that, you know, I, I speak to classes, I speak to people about, you know, what does the, the council do and what the staff do. And I'll tell you one thing, I says, if the right stuff didn't flow downhill correctly and, and quickly, you would see how fast that would be the number one concern in Los Banos. So it, it's not a glamorous job. It's not a glamorous project, but it makes the city, I will say glamorous, because, because we don't have to worry about, about something that, that, that people just take for granted. And, and as you see, as some of these ordinances and resolutions come up, where we're increasing possibly the citizens in Los Banos. And we're going to have the capacity to handle that. Plus, if a business comes in, which is most important and not just residential, that, that Mark, you, you and your staff have made it possible for expansion of Los Banos either way. And so personally, and, and thank you so much for completing this project. And it's paid for, and it's 5% change orders. I think that is just phenomenal. Mr. Jones, did you want to say something?
I just want to say, I just want to say thank you to Mark and Jeff for giving me a tour of this facility. It was a couple months back, a few months back. So it was quite impressive to see. I had no clue that you guys were constructing that, that, to that magnitude. So it was really impressive. Thank you, Alex, for setting that up, too.
And we'll do that for anyone that would like. Seriously, it's just, it was introduction of a new council person. But anyone else, just let us, give us a ring and we'll get you out there.
School bus, too?
No, don't have enough people out there for that. It's kind of a busy place.
I understand they won't let buses go on gravel roads, so I think we're okay there.
Might be a good understanding for, for kids. Mrs. Lewis?
Well, I have a couple of questions, just for my knowledge. The solid waste that you haul away, does that go to the Merced site for dumping? Or where does it go? And then number two, the different ponds out there, how does the leaching process, you know, what happens with that water?
Right. So, yes, the solids do go to the Billy Wright dump site. They are allowed to take it. And then as far as what you're calling leaching, we, most of our water is lost through evaporation. We do have seven ponds. We empty two of them throughout the summer for storage at this time of year because, again, it's been raining and we, you know, we aren't getting much evaporation. So during the summer, we are allowed to do some irrigation. We have some property there that's permanent pasture. We irrigate the permanent pasture. They do have cattle that, there's a, there's a lease on that for the cattle. And so we can get rid of enough water through evaporation. In the summer, we can lose, you know, five to six million gallons just to evaporation. We're only taking in, you know, 2.8. So we're losing more than what we're taking in at that point. But we empty those two ponds, get them ready for the winter time, and then we can fill those back up. And again, it's kind of a reciprocal thing. So it's kind of a recycle water type situation. But we do do a groundwater monitoring out there. We're acquired by the state, and so far, we're, we're doing fine.
Thank you.
Will we ever reach purple pipe status?
Okay, that's beyond me. I don't know that we will. That's, that's, that would be, you'd require tertiary treatments, which would mean you'd have to, I know at one point they looked into that, and it was cost prohibitive. It was up to 200 million gallons.
I think the only way we'll do that, eventually, we probably will have to do that because the only way to meet groundwater requirements in 20, 30, 40 years from now is to recycle water. There's not a lot of other ways of doing it. It'll probably have to be a purple pipe that goes specifically to orchards because it's hard to re-pipe the city. When, when we were talking about this being up to 4.9, that's the capacity we have in existing ponding and existing pumping.
Permit, yeah.
Permit. And that's our permit. The, the additional pump would get us to 8.0, but that requires new permit, new, and a lot more ponds than we have land for right now. And it's really questionable, and I think the answer is probably no, if the State Water Resources Control Board will permit any more ponding in the state of California. We're very efficient. We're a fantastic ponding situation. It's just not the environmental way of doing things anymore. So you're, probably your next step after 4.9 is going to be probably a tertiary facility that we're going to have to bond for at that point.
Is that called the package plant? Is that a package plant?
It's awful big plant to be a package plant. The package plants usually are, are minor plants that take flow around town. You, you can't, you wouldn't be able to package a 3 million gallon, 3 million gallon plant. It would have to have the whole oxidation ditches and everything.
Yeah, I think they have a package plant out at Nine Mile Station. They call it Nine Mile Station out there.
At one time, we were going to do that with Los Banos Foods, too, but, but their water quality wasn't that much worse than the salts that we were getting from our natural water. So we didn't do that.
Okay. And for everyone, purple pipe is, as they just explained, it's, it's recycling the wastewater and then treating it. And then, then you would water your, your grass or your flowers or, or other things.
Yeah. Landscape only.
I just remember it smells.
Is that the, am I on still?
Yeah, sure on.
Is that the process they use at El Viso? The purple pipe?
I have no idea what they do.
Yeah, they use, they use advanced tesorary there, yeah. You cannot release to a public water source of any type unless you're advanced tesorary. No, you just can't do that.
All right. Good. Thank you. Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, do I have a, a motion on resolution number 6063? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 6063.
Okay. I have a second. It's paid for. Somebody make a sentence. All right, Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Johnson Santos to approve resolution number 6063 and second by Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Thank you. Consideration of initiating proposed 218 process advising property owners of proposed increases to water wastewater, solid waste rates beginning July 1st, 2019, and approving the revised budget for fiscal year 2018-19 as it pertains to expenditures. And we were going to go to Director Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, staff is asking council to provide staff with direction to initiate the Prop 218 process. Approving this agenda item tonight does not raise rates. All it does is direct staff to proceed with the process of mailing out the notices. So I attached the notice to the back of the staff report. That would be sent to every property owner and every utility customer in Los Banos. And that would allow for them to submit a protest. It would be a majority vote. After no less than 45 days, we would hold a public hearing. And if we did not receive a majority of protest votes, then city council can consider adoption of the rates at that time. Obviously, if we do receive a majority of protests, then it wouldn't even be a consideration to council. So the last rate increase that we had was effective July 1st, 2015. And at that time, we increased it by 5%. We increased it for five years consecutively. The last time we did a Prop 218, that began in 2011 through 2015. Since that time, we have had several increases to contract services for solid waste, electricity, and salaries and benefits for all, all three accounts, which are water, sewer, and garbage that we're asking for this increase. The increase that we want to base this on is just Consumer Price Index or CPI. And we would use the San Francisco Bay Area CPI because that's what's available to us. And that's actually the same rate that our contract is increased by for solid waste. The reason why we want to do this, like I mentioned before, is because of the increases to contract service, salaries, benefits, electricities, so on and so forth. However, if we don't do this, we're going to put ourselves back into the situation that we did in the past where we did this Prop 218 back in 2011. And before that, it had been a good 15 years. So when we had to increase the rates there, we had large increases. For the first year back at that time, we increased it by 10%. The next year was 12%. And then it went down 6, 6, and I believe 5. So we're trying to avoid such large increases and just go slowly and pick it up by the CPI increase. So if you look at the rate notice, you will notice that its CPI increase for the first year beginning in July 2019, that would be 3.5% because CPI did increase by 3.56%. So the next year's beginning in July 2020 and on to July 2023, we don't know what the actual rate increase would be. But what it is listing here is it's CPI not to exceed 3.5%. So if CPI is 2%, then the rate increase would only be 2%. If CPI is 5%, the rate increase would only be 3.5%. Again, tonight, we're not asking you to, to raise the rates. We're just asking you to allow staff to initiate the Prop 218 process. Once we did that, after we would mail out the notices, we give them at least 45 days before holding the public hearing. And I'm hoping to hold the public hearing if we can get these mailed out quickly on May 15. And at that time is when we would have the public hearing, count the majority protest, and decide if council wanted to raise rates if the protest didn't occur. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay. Tonight is just to approve the 218 process. That is it. Any questions of Director Williams? Mr., Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. I, I just have a question on the residential gallon size for disposal carts. I know in, in our two gated communities, they have different sized garbage cans for just the regular trash. I think, I don't think that it's a 64 gallon. I think it might be smaller. But I also know that in, in the Bay Area where Republic is, that residents, they normally in other cities get the smaller cans. And if they want a larger can, then they pay a premium price for it. Have we ever considered doing anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. We, I mean, obviously, we have the 64 gallon totter and the 96 gallon, and there is a price difference for, for the two. totter and the ninety-six gallon and there is a price difference for, for the two. Um, the, the way that our contract written's, is written, I don't know that it would allow for it at this point in time, I mean, it's something that we can look at in the future.
So when the contract comes up with Republic, that's when we have to consider this?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
We're going out for um, sold an RFP to help us with that, uh, that whole process and it's about a year and a half process and they'll be looking at things such as the size of the cans and, and organic waste, but you won't see that, I don't believe, until like, I think uh towards June or July, you won't see that RFP coming back for approval, that consultant to actually help us with that, getting that contract done.
And, and how far are we out uh in negotiating for a new contract?
I think it's about a year and a half or just two, Greg?
Yeah, it expires in July of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, so I just wanted to confirm that three and a half would be the maximum that we would be allowed to charge if this got passed, right?
That's correct.
So it could come in quite a bit less, like one and a half percent for say year one and maybe two and a half for year two, whatever it might be.
That's correct. We, with this Prop two eighteen notice, we are allowed to charge anything less than what the notice states, um, we can't charge above the three and a half percent. So at any time, we can choose not to, to reach the full three and a half percent, even if the CPI is more than that.
Okay, so this is kind of more of like a protection cap to...
Yes.
Kind of hedge.
It's just to, to put a cap on it, basically. Um, I checked the, the rate increases over the last five years, just to see where we were and the range was, uh, it's mentioned in the staff report, I believe it was between two point four and three point six percent, so I kind of went with the higher end just because that's where we were today and it was more in line with the rate or the increases to our um salaries and benefits and as, as well as electricity and that's why I picked the higher rate.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion on City Council Resolution number six oh six four? Mrs. Lewis?
Uh, yes, um, what item number is this?
Six oh six four.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion uh to approve uh City Council Resolution number six oh six four as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos to approve City Council Resolution number six oh six four as read by title, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Consideration of appointment of Chair and Vice Chair to the Measure Eight Citizens Oversight Committee, we have five members, we have a full board and at this time I'm bringing the, the names forth of Michael Amabile and uh as Chair and John Cates as Vice Chair for one year. And then what will happen is the uh, the five members will then choose their own Chair and Vice Chair after the first year. Is that stated correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to make that motion, do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Oh, go ahead and hear, let me get you on there.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, it's a motion by the Mayor, uh, second by Mrs. Santos to approve uh Michael Amabile's Chair and John Cates's Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to advisement of public notices, Stacy, one report?
Yes, um, so uh we will be considering, the Planning Commission will be considering making a recommendation to Los Banos City Council to adopt a new article to Title Nine of Chapter Three of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to sidewalk vending and this is in response to SB nine four six. Um, again, this is a new state law and we are just ensuring that our zoning code complies with state law regulations. Um, there's, there was a new law that was um made effective January first um that allows for sidewalk vending and this will actually be separate from our mobile vending ordinance, this will be a standalone um sidewalk vending ordinance, uh, which will have its own article. Uh, this particular item will be presented to the Planning Commission on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh at seven PM um here in the council chambers and that concludes my report.
Is there any compensation from anyone to help us with this stuff? Or is this just it, it's coming down from Sacramento?
So the default is just to follow the state's requirements and by, technically by, by law right now, that's the default? So if somebody came with us who wanted to sidewalk vend, that's what we would have to use. It's just we want to ensure that we're, we're preserving health, safety and welfare to, to the extent that we can within the law.
Right, but there, but there's, but there's no money from the state to help us monitor all these things that they want put in place?
There is not, that I'm aware of, but we could continue to look, we'll continue.
All right. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's go on to item twelve, City Manager's Report, Alex?
Just a, just a thank you to the council, a little bit of a longer than usual night tonight, thanks to the council for the, for the good discussion on our various items and thanks to Stacy for a job well done on the items she presented this evening, that's all.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Faria, he has nothing to say and let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much. Um, over the weekend, uh, I had went to the van pool um meeting at the, uh, event at the community center and I was a little bit lower in attendance, but it was good to know uh that they're looking in our area for um, uh, for that type of assistance. And the van pools, uh, when you're renting, you're, they're getting, you're able to get a van, which could go up to fifteen passengers if you so choose and you would um essentially do a carpool situation and um you could get uh compensation for doing that. So I went to that event, um, they had free tacos, which brought a lot of the kids next door who were playing basketball over, um, but that was event. Um, and then uh, let's see, also went to a, the Town Hall meeting, which uh was hosted by uh Scott Silvera in Santa Nila, it was good to see, especially due to the fact that we have our upcoming, um, at least for me, uh, it was good to see uh because we have our upcoming um community events, so went to that, uh, stayed for about an hour and a half. Um, and then I also want to say, which I guess will be getting in my soapbox a little bit, but there was a comment made earlier about we, us being affordable here in town. Um, and I just have to say that I feel as though we are affordable to those people who are coming in from the Bay Area, but for here in Los Banos, their prices are just a little bit higher than a lot of the people can afford here with unfortunately, um, which our city staff is working on, so that is nothing against what our city is doing as a whole, but the prices for our houses are higher than what residents can afford. So I just wanna say, I guess, thank you for the record that it's, I, I know we are working on trying to get more options out here for our residents, but yes, we, we are not as affordable as we once were, so, but that is all I have to say tonight, so thank you.
Okay.
No report.
Okay. Um, okay, well, uh, I also went to the van pool, uh, I wish the attendance could have been better and uh I have uh some ideas from Stacy and Alex with some money to back it up, so uh maybe we can get the word on a little bit better, uh, and I'll talk to you two about that. Um, so uh also uh there was Los Banos Day and it was Terry Brown and his band uh with the Hot City Barbecue in Españas and uh it was a really nice event, it was on Saturday night and had a good time, uh, so thank you to those three people who, who put that on. And um, let's see, what else? Can't think of anything else. Okay, so with that, uh, I would like to adjourn this meeting unless anyone has anything else to say at nine fifty-one.